If you guys can hear me okay, Debbie, let's go ahead and officially call the meeting to order.
Noted.
All right, first up, we have our agenda review. It's a fairly lightweight agenda tonight. We have some first readings on policies and we have a discussion item for coming up with a standing agenda item, shared document that we would all have access to. At this point, I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Okay, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
All right, thanks, guys. So the first block is our updated policies, and there are four tonight. And I believe we have with us Dawn, Melissa, and Dixon, so if they could be promoted to the panelist, we will have the discussion originate with them as we've been doing. All right, hey, guys.
How are you?
Oh.
Good.
Excellent.
So I'm pulling up the first one. I don't remember who was who, but I know you each, well, there were multiple names I saw on the cover sheet, so I think you each might even have one. So, I don't know, let's see, Melissa, it looks like you are first.
I'm first. All right, this one was a recommended change. OSBA's attorneys thought that we should clarify some issues around child custody. So we looked at our current policy, we looked at the recommended policy, and I think we decided that the recommended policy puts a little more onus on the custodial parent to provide notice and like tell the district, these are the parameters that the district's working under. So we liked that, that it was on them. We did add guardian because there are some instances where maybe a guardian has custody and there's an issue with separation there. So we added that just in case, but otherwise, it looked fine to us.
Very good. Anybody on the board have any questions for Melissa or for any discussion on the policy update? Okay, I'll take that as smooth sailing. Thank you. The next one looks like is Dixon. So this is JGAB, use of restraint or seclusion.
Yes, we worked on this quite some time because it's a really timely issue, obviously, but I think there were some changes or suggested changes that Janet added that she can cover those if she would like to tonight, but one of the things that we really thought was paramount was to make sure that there were links to law enforcement on anything to do with injury or any kind of harm done either to a staff member or to a student. And it also had an associated AR with it. And Janet, you made some edits. Would you like to cover those?
Sure, yeah, I just added a comment to the cover sheet. I was wondering, and we can trust us as a board and don't have to decide, I know that this data is, the district has to report data every year on incidents of, you know, where this kind of thing is not that appropriate, and I wondered whether maybe there were other incidents as a district that we wanted to know about sort of on a routine basis rather than just saying that the report is available, that there may be a time and a place during the year where we look at incidents like this, incidents of harassment, incidents that are, I guess, any kind of incidents that sort of rise to the level of something that we would consider kind of problematic and we want to make sure we're trending the right way and that we're addressing these and that we're transparent about them. So just something to keep in mind, again, we don't have to make any decisions about that tonight, but just as a matter of transparency, obviously, these reports are all available to people who request them, but there does sometimes, there might be calls for us as a board to bring some of these things to light more intentionally. Thanks, Dixon.
True. Any questions?
No real questions. I just, I just thought Janet made a good suggestion. I mean, I just think it should be, you know, here's your look at it, so, thank you. Yeah, it seems like an interesting point to make. And so Janet, you're just sort of making it as a broad suggestion based on this summary update, but you're not actually tying it to the policy, is that my understanding?
Correct. And in fact, it just sort of came into my mind when I was reading the policy and the policy said, we're required to provide a report to ODE and that report is available, right? That report's available to the public, it's available to the board. And I just thought, hmm, that's really, that's really interesting because that is sort of a different level from us actually making a point of discussing those incidents in public, whether, and again, other similar things too. It's not necessarily just this. It's just more broadly, are there, are there data that we want to be looking at as a routine matter every year on issues that we feel like are compelling?
Right. I don't know, Scott or Dan, do you have anything you want to weigh in on this regarding that point? I mean, again, it's not tied directly to the policy, but we're in discussion and it's a work session, so we might as well talk about it.
No, I think it's, you know, it's always a matter of best practice to make sure that our systems are healthy and that would be a data point we can, we can absolutely take a look at. We can set dates or sort of like how we do screening, you know, in our academics as a system. We can, we can do that with, you know, incident reports and things of that nature. I think that's, that's, that would be a best practice.
Yeah, I have no concerns with this. So I mean, if you're, the list on page, it starts on page five and goes on to page six, the total number of this, the total number of that, I mean, that's the report that goes to ODE that could easily be shared with the board.
Yeah, easily, yeah.
It would be interesting to see if there were any other items like that in the policies. And I guess for me, I'd rather be reviewing things on a regular basis than hearing about something that might be, you know, skewing our attention a little bit, just so it feels like we're regularly attending to things. This is my first thought, anyway.
Yeah, it brings to mind for me some of those division, with the Division 22 standards, you know, we just approved those and it's a very long list and we certainly don't need to take time to dig into each and every one of those, particularly if we're compliant, like, you know, move on.
Sure.
But there are some things there that you think to yourself, I'd really like to know a little bit more about how we're doing. Yes, we're compliant, but what does that mean? What are we required to do? Are we exceeding that? Are we, is this a point that we're focusing on as a district to do better? And, you know, just giving it a little bit more context, I think, is sometimes helpful.
Yeah, good point. So what do we want to have next steps be here? I mean, I think, you know, unofficially, it seems like there's pretty broad agreement that we ought to, we ought to move forward and ask for that, but, you know, what, what might that actually look like, I guess? Is this a, you know, just something that we're sort of informally requesting or are we going to put into some policy that we expect to be provided with this type of information? Or is it, is it not policy, is it some other item? I guess I'm drawing a blank as to how, how we would formalize that request.
I think one, one thought I would have was that we just sort of hold it loosely for right now and pay attention as we're going through policies for other times that things pop up that we say, here's another data point that we might be interested in, and kind of look at the long term and say, you know, over the long term, which of these do we want to start collecting and looking at more closely? So maybe if we, if we just sort of keep that in the back of our minds and, you know, I'm happy as a member of the policy group to kind of have that be sort of one of my focus areas to think about as we're moving through, are there other pieces of data that people or that we would be interested in looking at? And we as a board, you know, can jump in and say, as we discuss things, hey, you know what, I'd love to see that, that information in a more formal way once a year or, you know, maybe as we, as we also, as we look at our calendar tonight, thinking, where would be some obvious places to put in those conversations? Are there natural places where we can say, you know, because we don't, I don't think we want it to be kind of this expose type of thing, right? I think we want it to be intentional as part of areas that we're trying to improve our practices. And so are there natural places where we fit those conversations rather than it being, you know, ooh, okay, we're talking about this big scary stuff tonight? And, sorry, Aaron?
No, no, I would just say, given, given that we're reviewing a policy right now and we're working on the edits and we're in the process, after number 10 here on page six talks about, you know, the annual report be made available to the public, main office and website into the board, and then also to parents and guardians, why don't we maybe kind of ponder over the next few readings, adding a time binding, specifying it now? We're doing it, why, why go back and have to revisit it when we can do it now on the policy and say, we as a board can determine when we do that, maybe we do it at the June board meeting, you know, if that's appropriate, because that's kind of at the conclusion of the school year. That might be, or a July board meeting, you know, summer can be a little bit lighter. That might be a good time to do some review of some of these, some of the other policies that we have in there that have some action items or have some review items tied to them. I just think if we're going to review the policy and change the policy now and amend it, let's, let's time bind it now and not have to, not have to touch it again.
Right, well, there's a, there's like, Janet mentioned, there's the Division 22 standards and Scott basically says, I've reported, that's the state, and we just kind of go, good, you've done that. Can, you know, would that be a time to say, and, and here's this report, and here you go, you know, I sent it into the state, here's your copies? Any questions?
And what time of year do we do the district?
That kind of statement.
That was the last, that was our last, is that always?
Was that the last?
They changed it, it's due November 1st.
That's right, that was the last one, okay.
Okay.
Which is why we have it on the last agenda.
It's just a simple thing.
We can absolutely do that, though. It makes sense to me that we, we provide, you know, this type of data. It's sort of, I don't know, I think of it kind of like a screener, you know, it tells us how our systems are doing and, and gives us a conversation point. I, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, it doesn't really add any, any item on any agenda, it's just a one additional item on an already, on an already thing that we already do here.
Yep.
My only concern about putting a date in policy is that it becomes one of those things that you can't forget. And, I don't know, I just worry, as the person who is kind of the part of the agenda keeper team right now, that's hard sometimes. And I guess I would flex, I would prefer flexibility.
Right, fair enough.
But I, I'm not closed off to this idea, it's just that I, I think that like Division 22 is like, that rises to a higher level because it's like we're man, it's that we have to have that on our agenda. So, I don't know, I'm kind of up in the air. And maybe when we look, have our second discussion item or major thing tonight, we can take a look at like other ways that we might be able to do that and then discuss, you know, in future, the next reading, like other options, either, either putting it in time, time binding it in the policy or keeping it more informal but purposeful, like we do want to do this.
Well, and I'd really like to give Scott and Dan some time to say, you know, here are some other kind of reporting data things that you might want to lump together with that, and how does that affect when we review them rather than just isolating this one? So I agree, Jennifer, I think if we give ourselves some time to sort of chew on the best way to go about this rather than trying to make that edit tonight.
And that'll give us a chance to find out when we submit that report to ODE, so we can come back to you next time, say, this is when we submit this report. We could maybe even give you a sample of what the, I guess it'd be the 18, 19 school year, the last time we were in for a full school year, so you could look at kind of the data of what a full year of a school year looks like in terms of the number of restraints, the number of seclusions in a full school year, so.
Yeah, in general, I think that's good information for us to see because it's kind of hidden, like even working in a school, I don't see what, when I do sometimes, but I don't see all of it. And I know my principal knows when it all happens, but I think it might be eye opening to us about supports that we might increasingly need. I, I guess, just in general, I think that education has seen more of that. And so it would be good for us to see our data.
Okay, well, I like the way that landed. I think we'll get some more information at our next discussion on it. And I think Jennifer's point was, was also pretty accurate. We'll talk more about it when we talk about our agenda template and sort of, you know, how many things are firm versus how many things are sort of broadly recommended in certain timeframes. Are there other questions, comments on JGAB? Anything on the sort of merits of the changes themselves? How about the AR, the related AR, Dixon? I don't imagine that's tremendously different. I mean, it's, it's a different policy and it has sort of a slightly different intention, but they're tied at the hip. So anything specific about the AR we ought to talk about?
There wasn't anything remarkable in there. It was a nice segue between the policy and the AR, so unless there's any questions, I don't think there was anything of concern.
Okay, well, JHCA, which is immunization, physical examinations, vision screening, eye examination, and dental screening. So that policy was covered, I think, by Dawn?
All right. I'm actually sharing my screen out for those following along so that you can look at a couple of things with me. But here we go. There are a few things that Janet brought up that I think were really important to take a look at. We actually had a lot of discussion around this. We did get Leslie's input, so a lot of people have had their eyes on this. However, question that Janet had, there's a footnote on page one that basically says, regardless of whether a student experiencing homelessness has the documentation that's being required, they'll be admitted anyway. They're going to be immediately enrolled. But Janet's point was, do we want to add a line to the effect here? The district will continue to make reasonable attempts to obtain student records as deemed appropriate and necessary. And she did offer very kindly to follow up with OSBA. Janet, do you want to say anything more about that?
I have not yet followed up with OSBA, however, yeah, and that came from the place that I wasn't entirely sure, based on the footnote, whether we were exempting the student from those requirements or just if there was a grace period or, I mean, obviously, those are circumstances that are very sometimes challenging, right? And so the act is clear that you can't not enroll a student based on that, not having that information. But it seemed to me to say that as a district, we want to say, well, it is always our intention to have that information and we should make reasonable attempts to continue to pursue it, you know, despite the fact that we, you know, that we're not required to, to hold the student, you know, out of, out of class as a result. But I can, I am happy to follow up with OSBA if that's what the board and the committee would like, just to make sure that there isn't any other information about those requirements that we're not aware of.
Yeah, it's a good point. I'm, I'm also wondering about sort of the distinction between whether, you know, it talks about enrolling a student, a bunch of stuff in the parentheses and then in the school selected, even if the student isn't able to produce it. You're right, it doesn't really indicate that there's a, sorry, guys, I'm getting a bad echo again. It doesn't really indicate that there's an expiration to it or that it ever goes, you know, in fact, it doesn't even make it clear that if they are no longer experiencing homelessness, that there's any new trigger. I mean, like, you know, it's intriguing to me, right? So I, on the other hand, don't necessarily like the idea that, that we keep anybody out of school for these reasons under really most any circumstance. So I think that, I'm curious what the law is as it relates to this and how this particular bullet would play into the legal ramifications of it. So I think following up, make a short answer, following up with OSBA sounds like a good idea, so maybe that's a good next step.
All right, I'm going to add that to our notes, Janet, but I know that you're also taking notes, I'm sure, and if you don't mind reaching out, that would be great. Okay, the second point that Janet brought up, that under dental screening, the question is, does the district provide the information outlined in the first paragraph? And do we require the certification outlined in the second paragraph? So let's take those one at a time. So the information outlined in the first paragraph, I've got the echo too, good, okay. The district will file in the student's health record any dental screening certifications and any results of a dental screening known by the district. And that's the key phrase there, known by the district. So the way that I'm interpreting this is that it, let's see, does it provide, okay, and then will provide to the parent or guardian standardized information. So I don't know if anybody on Scott's team is prepared to kind of address that. If not, we can go back and do a little bit more research to answer that question. We definitely talked at length with this policy about what things are mentioned versus what is our actual practice. And I think especially with the distractions of COVID, it's, it's been a minute since I think the district has been able to get in front of some of this, right? They've had much higher priorities. So I don't know the answer to that first question.
And I think it's safe to say that Scott and his team don't know the answer to that at this point.
That's, that's fine.
I think that's fair to say.
Okay.
Fair enough. I think that's something that we can get the answer to relatively easily, and I don't think it would hold this policy up, but we can certainly have it in time for the second reading.
As a parent of a kindergartner this year, I feel like I got that information.
Okay, good, Melissa, that's good feedback.
I'm pretty sure.
So why would you confirm that and, you know, make sure it's kind of hitting all the things? And if not, you know, we'll come up with a plan to address that in the policy. Okay, so the second part of Janet's question is, do we require the certification outlined in paragraph two? And do we have to require it or is it optional? So paragraph two says, the parent or guardian of a student who's seven years of age or younger and is beginning an education program within the district for the first time will submit a certification within 120 days of beginning the education program, that the student has received a dental screening within the previous 12 months. And again, I think we're not going to put you on the spot, but we'll go and get that information. I think we did, we talked a lot as a group at our last meeting about this, but I don't know where we landed on this in terms of whether it's, it's required or not, because it's not clear in the policy language.
Is that something you'd like me to tack on to my OSBA email? Or is there a different avenue for, for finding out that, whether or not it's required?
So is the question whether it's required legally?
Right, like, yeah, if it's required in policy, I guess, yeah.
I think the question, as I understood it from the cover sheet, is you were basically, Dawn, can you, Dawn, can you put the cover sheet back on there just real quick to make me look at that question? So do we require the certification? So basically, what I hear you asking is, are we following this policy by require, because the policy says we will require this.
Right.
So are we actually?
Are we requiring it? And if we're not, are we required to require it, you know, which was sort of question number two of them, yeah. Because if we're, if we're not required to, and we're generally not doing that, and we don't feel that there's a need to do it, then we should just take it out of policy.
Correct. Yeah, so I think we need to find out, are we doing this? If we're not, are we supposed to? Because then we need to start.
Right.
Or if we're not, then bring it back to you to maybe we don't put this, put in policy anymore.
Yeah.
Great. I mean, and one, two, and three right there list, well, off the top of my head, all the sort of common reasons somebody might not. In other words, you can choose not to for a whole host of reasons, including you don't want to, basically. And so it, but you have to acknowledge it, right? So I think that's what this is saying, is that you're just, you know, you're providing a statement or, or the certification indicating that you have had it or that you, you know, aren't claiming to for whatever reason. And, I mean, so there's no burden, it doesn't, it doesn't appear there's a burden placed on anybody regarding this other than providing it. So to that end, it's not a barrier to anybody in my mind. It's, I think Dan's point is, are we doing it? And Janet's broader point of, are we and do we have to? I think those are good questions.
I mean, it's the first time I've seen something like this. I mean, I, I understand vision screenings and hearing screenings because it's directly related to you being able to absorb material in the classroom. And, but this, this seems like sort of an extra step and it would just, I would be really interested to know to what extent it's required by law because it feels somewhat unrelated to sort of a child, a student's educational experience.
My school, we do dental screenings and we actually give dental, they, they fill cavities in the library.
Really?
Yeah.
Actually, so much of the research suggests that, you know, just one cavity equals a certain amount of days missed.
Really?
And it's the reason why you see more dental clinics coming into schools.
Okay.
Interesting.
Very common in, in the schools that I've, I've worked in in the past.
Yep. All right, so I will wrap back around. Janet, I'm going to leave some notes on the cover sheet and I'll, Dan and Leslie, I'll shoot you an email to show this out again to try to get some answers about that specific one. All right. Also, just to kind of keep you guys in the loop on what's next, you heard from Scott at your last meeting that there are 38 new policies. Guess what? A lot of those you guys just approved and just looked at. So, of course, because we chose what we thought were the more urgent concerns and surely those are the ones that are being updated. So our plan is in November, policies that were just updated by OSBA but are still in your pipeline have not been approved yet, those are the ones that we're going to bring to you in November. The ones that we'll bring to you in December will be the ones that you've already approved. So unfortunately, we have to go back. Hopefully, these are minor changes. We're, we still need to get a bunch of documents together to be able to compare everything, but that's our work for the rest of the year. As we can, we're going to keep adding new ones, but obviously, we want to try to also stay on top of those updates so we don't slip into a backlog situation again.
Right, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Jonathan, I just wanted to mention that I received an email today from Dawn Tacker's son, who just finished his Eagle Scout project in the Oak Grove at Mark Twain and finished an information kiosk, which is just beautiful. So I'll add that in my updates for you guys to see that, but it's, it was really, really beautiful to receive that. So just wanted to say, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you. Very proud. He is, he will be fourth generation of Eagle Scouts in our family, so.
That's amazing. That's amazing legacy.
Really does.
If I could hijack my teammates, Melissa, Dawn, and Dixon, was, was, are we meeting this Friday and was I supposed to send out a calendar invite?
It actually depends a little bit on documentation. If we have documents, basically, when I looked at the work, Dan, it, it needs to be super tight and organized. And so I, I asked Debbie, I pled with Debbie to see what she could get together, but it's very last minute at this point. I was in Corvallis last few days at OSU with my son, so I didn't get that to her with a lot of leeway. But if, let's check in tomorrow by email. We might want to just postpone it, although if Dixon and Melissa, if you guys want to do a tutorial, that would be helpful. I can do that with you guys, or we can also just like divvy up the rest of the agenda that's left. But Lori, Melissa, even Janet, if you want to jump in and assign yourselves some new policies, there's still new ones that we haven't touched yet. But we might be able to cancel that meeting. That's the short story of this.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Dan's a stickler for calendars.
Yeah.
All right.
Keeps us on track.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Well, I really appreciate it, guys, thank you. I think that moves us to item 3B, unless anybody else has anything else on any of All right. Well, let's jump into 3B. So, this is something that's been certainly talked about a little bit. Jennifer, I know has brought it up a few times, and it's a really, I think, a great idea. So, I'll just kick it off by saying, you know, this idea is to get a standing agenda item template, if you will, that would cover the year, that would help both future boards, as well as us almost immediately, making sure that we're not dropping the ball on something, you know, a lot of times, we look to the year prior when we're putting an agenda together, to sort of ask ourselves, what are the things that we need to make sure we're not forgetting about? You know, there's also timely things that we're thinking about in the moment that are a lot easier typically to remember. But then there's sort of those other things that I think are easy to forget. We all have other things going on in our lives, and we may or may not be thinking exactly about all of them. And so, the idea would be to put something together that really covers, in a lot of ways, like OSBA's calendar does, except it's far more personalized for SFSD, and would be something all board members would have visibility to, and you could all be sort of jointly responsible for helping to make sure that it, you know, is appropriate and covers all of the items that we care about. I don't know, Jennifer, that was my lead in, but I covered a lot of it, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, well, I'm just interested to hear what other people's ideas are, because, you know, I have, you know, vague vision. Debbie's prepared a document that she uses, that we could actually make it more of a shared document. So, I'm just interested to hear what other people say. I think we need to, if we do do this, nail down a name, because I haven't thought of a good one yet, and so maybe somebody will think of something that's easy for us to remember, and then just talk about kind of the details of it. And so, I think Debbie may be able to share the document now, perhaps, that she's put together, and it does, and it's not, I mean, I think the idea is it's not just those things that we do annually, but also the things that aren't, that are just particular to that moment in time. And so, the things at the top, she says, pending agenda items, so those could be things that aren't necessarily, you know, traditionally what we see at the December regular meeting. And then she's got a section about superintendent reports, and so, this could be just, you know, where we, it's like, I think Tom used the word parking lot. That's where we park the idea until it gets on the agenda and then can be, you know, removed. But then down below, she has listed, you know, these are the types of things that we talk about in July, these are the things that we talk about in, you know, whatever month it is. And I love that the ORS is linked there, because then you can go see the reason why we're talking about it. And so, I guess my proposal would be that if this is, this is what we use, something like this, that we all have viewing rights, and then the people who actually put the agenda together can have editing rights, so that we can all kind of know what's going on, what's coming up. There's the idiom that the many hands make light work, right? I don't know if there's a many eyes, I don't know if there's one like that, but I just feel like the more eyes are on everything, the more likely we are to be on target and not miss things.
I like this conceptually, too, because it allows you to see which meeting months are really heavy lifts. And so, you're not inclined to go, yeah, let's talk about this big topic in September, when there are all of these other things that just sort of have to happen. And that way, you can, some of these issues that we've been kind of itching to get into, now we can say, okay, when's a really good time? Where do we have a little space that we can, you know, start thinking about this new initiative, or this thing that we've been wanting to talk about for so long? Because those things get lost, too. We get really caught up in the day to day, and in the month to month, then we lose, oh, that's right, we've been talking about that for two years, and we've never gotten around to doing it. And this helps us find a spot for those.
Yeah, I would love to see that. I think that would be a nice addition.
Yeah, thanks, Lori. I agree.
I was going to say, for those of you who are actually developing the agenda, do you think this would also be?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
The last time we developed, Jonathan was saying, now, am I missing something? Is there something that we were supposed to put on there? And I'm like, if we were using a document, we could, you know, if we're faithful to using it.
Yeah.
It can live on the document until we're ready to put it on. And so, I think that it would be very helpful as long as we use it, you know? And so, that would be the test, I guess.
Yeah.
Right. And I think having Debbie be a key gatekeeper on it, or the one, I mean, because as boards change, and chairs change, and things like that, right? Well, the board secretary may well, you know, live through a lot of that transition and can help make sure that this document stays up to date, and can, you know, explain how it's used to a new chair, vice chair, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, I think even just having the document, even if the board secretary also changes, even just having it would be a really nice starting point for anybody. So, I think there's a lot of value there.
Do you anticipate having some version of this document be publicly available, or not? Is there like a scaled-down version that says, well, here are all the things we know we're going to be talking about, because they're required by statute? Is that something that we could put on board books, so that the public has a sense for at least, at least some of them? I don't know.
We already have that, we do. Debbie, yeah.
So, I'm backfilling that information into this.
Oh, got it.
And then I'll put some more of our personal, not personal, but our recurring Silver Falls items in there as well.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
So, this will take the place of basically what we have now.
Yes, I'm just taking the OSBA's version, popping it into here, and then I'm going to go through all of our agendas for the last couple of years and see any of the recurring things that don't fit in.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think the understanding, that the one, I think, concern that I had when I brought up this idea is if people say, oh, well, you said you were going to do this on this month, and you didn't do it, you know, it's got to be flexible.
Right.
Because, that's right, a living document, and that's why I like the idea of making a Google Doc, because you can see the changes in real time. Okay, anybody have any ideas about a good name for such document? I have these words written down, agenda, topic, list, calendar, plan, document. I don't know, future agendas?
Master calendar, or master schedule?
As long as people don't think it's like, you must do. I mean, there are some things we must do, but for the most part, we'd have to be.
Working calendar, something like that. It would indicate it's, you know, subject to change, subject to.
So, working agenda?
Agenda planning template, or document.
Plan agenda.
Working agenda works.
Addending planning document works for me. Any other ideas? All right, so we can, if we're good on that, we can, the next time we meet as a group, we can go ahead and share it out to you all, so that you can have your eyes on it.
That's great.
Great.
I don't know how we've managed without it.
Oh, Debbie.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this just makes it a little more like it's more teamwork, you know? Instead of just relying on, you know, a few people, it's, let's use our collective brain power.
And being able to look ahead, I really appreciate that, you know, knowing kind of what's coming down the pike, rather than just, you know, waiting for necessarily the details of the forthcoming month's agenda, being able to kind of have a bit of perspective is helpful.
All right, any, anything else on this topic tonight?
Oh, well, just to bring our other discussion into it, this idea of, you know, having the reports on certain things, it could be that we put them into that document.
Right. No, I think, I knew what you were getting at when you started hinting at that earlier, and that may well be a really flexible way of getting us to where we expect to have these reports, and we have them on the agenda, but they're not locked in stone in a particular month and policy, there's, again, flexibility around it, we don't get ourselves into trouble because we violated our own policy. I like that idea. In general, I like having policies that are nice and broad, so.
Something to think about, anyway, you know, we have options.
Okay. Well, nice and short meeting, folks, so unless there's anything else, we are ready to adjourn. And that was it for the agenda items tonight. Appreciate your patience with me on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.